The Berlin Board of Education, committed to continuous improvement.
Like to call the meeting to order and start this meeting?
Going to high school, carrying along.
As we do every meeting with a pledge of allegiance. And before we get started, I'd like to note that we are adding an item under new business. Item E is the presentation of a district continuous improvement plan. So our first item on the agenda is the student presentations by some students from right here at McGee. To whom am I turning this over? I assume all of you.
So welcome, everybody. As you're aware, it's among our goals to create a structure for authentic learning opportunities, ignite a spark of interest in an area that students might otherwise not have an opportunity, communicate clearly and build capacity using digital technologies. These are certainly targets that are aligned with our school goals, our school improvement plans, and our Berlin learner outcomes. Tonight, we're really proud to demonstrate evidence of our efforts to meet these objectives through a presentation by, we have some McGee students here, we have some promoted McGee students who are at the high school right now, and our social studies teacher, school photographer, and newsroom supervisor, Mr. Cormack. They intend tonight to show you our daily production of the morning news and how that's a valuable use of time and resources. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Cormack and our students. Justin, if you could go to the next slide, buddy. Next slide, Justin. There we go. Good evening, Board of Ed. My name is Kevin Cormack, and I'm here with current and former McGee students, members of the McGee Morning News crew. We're here to present to you on the McGee Morning News. Our purpose, as Mr. Urso said, is to communicate clearly and effectively important school messages in a manner that will engage McGee learners and to celebrate the achievements of members of our community. We have structured our presentation this evening to follow the format of the morning news. So you'll hear the presenters from time to time using phrases that don't quite fit here, but that students would hear at McGee. We go live in three, two, one. Justin, please advance to the intro screen. Kevin, please start the music.
May we have your attention, please?
Teachers, please ask for silence in your homeroom and please have students close their Chromebooks.
Thank you.
Good morning, good evening, Berlin Board of Education. Today is Monday, September 24, 2018.
I'm McKenna.
Along with Andrew, reporting to you on the McGee Daily News.
Andrew and I are ninth grade students at VHS, and we are part of last year's news, morning news crew. We will leave you through this evening's presentation for you, but all of us will have a chance to speak. Our studio is the projection booth in the rear end of the auditorium, right above the LCD projector.
At this point in the announcements, we do the pledge of allegiance. It's harder than you think because there's not much space in the room, and we're wearing body microphones, so the cables like to snag on the chairs. We also have to be very careful to not point our rear ends at the television.
After the pledge, the first announcer gives the day number.
The second announcer gives the rotation type.
And the first announcer comes back to give the exact rotation.
Then we announce the lunch for the day. We have an echo box for pizza day and nachos day.
Next, we celebrate our students' birthdays. We sometimes bet in special celebrities' birthdays, too. We dance and have fun to encourage the homerooms of the birthday students to join in and celebrate with us.
Today, the morning news crew wished a happy birthday to Danica Demaras, Justin Eckroth, Cameron Jutress, and Isabella Camita.
After the birthday list, we read the day's announcements, alternating between readers.
During this evening's presentation, you'll see Mr. Cormack giving instructions to two techs. This happens each morning behind the scenes until the news crew can do everything themselves.
The McGee Morning News announcements started around 2009 as a slideshow that we still run on the televisions in the building.
When we started the slideshow, it was created by Assistant Principal Ventura, who handed it off to Mr. Cormack to be loaded onto the machine.
The slideshow started because Mr. Benigni, who had been principal before, wanted to inform the students in a way that would engage them.
The daily slideshow and the script for the television show are created daily by Mr. Cormack. Teachers who want something announced, send it to Mr. Cormack, and he puts it all together. Announcements must be received by 6:00 AM to make the day's news. Around 2011, we added a live reading to the announcements. The studio portion was run at the time by Mr. Griswold.
Our studio consists of one commercial-grade BetaCam cam and a smaller consumer-grade mic cam, mini cam, that we use for sports reporting. There's also a video mixer and a board, a mixer board and a soundboard, and some laptops for specific jobs.
My name is Paris, and I am one of this year's morning news presenters. The first tech station is the video mixer. We use a Panasonic WJMX-50A mixer, which allows us to mix up to up to five video sources. We've also found a way to put titles on our announcements using the mixer. The mixer is new to us. Last year, replacing an older Panasonic mixer. When the mixer came in, Andrew Black took the manual home and quickly became an expert on what the unit could do. Adrian quickly followed and became an expert, too. When I'm running to the mixer, I choose which video source to use. Either our main camera, the sports camera, the logo and titles laptop, or the laptop for showing pre-recorded video. I transition from one source to another and get to choose the effect. I have to remember to throw the right switches for the logo and titles. Justin will explain the soundboard.
My name is Kevin. I'm also a member of this year's morning news. The music we're using now is all MP3 files. We used to have show sets on CD, but moving to MP3 allows us to mix more and add a song into the rotation if we can convince Mr. Cormack. One announcer last year got Mr. Cormack to add some U2 to the mix. The titles are an important part of our announcements. They help out the view enough of the name of the person who is speaking. The logos that we use make the finished presentation look slick and professional. At the title station, I have to watch three E screens. One has the script, one has the feed of the school seeds, and one has the screen on the laptop that I'm running.
Hello, my name is Andrew, another announcer. Job is the sports and March Madness reader. Sometimes the person running the soundboard moves over and does the sports, and sometimes we even have an extra person, and it works even better. There's a small teleprompter at the, there's a small teleprompter at the sports station in front of the camera, so you can read the script, but you're always looking at the camera. Sports come at the end of the announcements, so sometimes you have to read very fast, and sometimes you have to read very fast to beat the bell, especially when the coaches get creative with their announcements.
Hello, my name is Greg. I'm part of this year's news crew. I'm here to tell you about how we use pre-recorded videos. Every once in a while, a teacher submits a video to run during announcements. Like this one you just saw with Justin. For example, during World Language Week, or when a class is advertising for a special fundraiser, we use a special laptop just for that, and it sends a TV signal to the mixer. The person who runs the titles is responsible for setting up, starting, and stopping the video. It's also your job to test the video before the announcements start. Now, back to the news.
The person on the sound station also starts a recording of the daily presentation. Most of the time, the computer cooperates. The recording is placed into a folder linked off of the school website, so the work is visible to the world.
The slideshow that Mr. Cormack creates is also available on the school website, and Mrs. Colby puts an extract version of it that Mr. Cormack created on the school website and on Schoology.
Along the way, we've had some special shows. One year, we had two announcers named Audrey, and so we had the Weekly Audrey Show.
Last year, we had two announcers named Emily, so there was a Weekly Emily Show.
Here at McGee, we are aware of Bina Klick's Habits of Mind. These are habits that help students to be successful learners and prepare us for success later in life.
Some habits of mind we practice almost daily are persisting, managing impulsivity, thinking flexibly, striving for accuracy, applying past knowledge to new situations, thinking and communicating clearly with precision, creating and imaging, and innovating, taking responsible risks, and remaining open to continuous learning.
Not included among the habits of mind are the ways that being part of this group improves our self-confidence and our self-advocacy.
One benefit that I got from being on the announcements last year was my courage for being on the camera. Anywhere, I used to not have much courage in front of a camera or in front of any sort of audience.
One benefit that I got from being on the announcements last year was reading off names, and I got better as year went on.
One benefit that I got from being on the announcements last year was being creative with the technology given to me. For example, the field mixer and MP3 files.
One benefit that I got this year so far from being on the announcements was definitely learning how to use the technology here, because I like walked into that room the first day, and it just looked at all of it, and I'm like, what am I looking at? And it was, and now it's only like not many weeks into the school year, and I already know how to do all the sound and video and stuff. Yeah.
One benefit I got from the being on the announcements this year was courage and confidence, because now I can stand up in front of people like you guys and talk. Usually, I was all shy and would mess up and sweat a lot.
The McGee Morning News crew thanks Mrs. Coughlin and Mr. Bernelli for their expert technical help in preparing for this presentation.
We also thank the Board of Education for having us this evening, and Mr. Urso for selecting us to present to you tonight. This is McKenna.
And Andrew.
Reminding you that at McGee, we promise to be kind, honest, and work to improve.
Have a great day.
Thank you for that presentation. I would just like to say that I appreciate that you all have contributed to your school community, but also gained something individually. So thank you for sharing all of what you have gained and also for giving and contributing to your school community. And that's a fantastic tie. Does anyone have any questions for the students or for Mr. Cormack?
How do you guys, are you chosen to do this in the morning, or do you volunteer? How does exactly work that you are able to do this?
This year, I worked with the school counselor to select eight great students based on certain criteria. So she gave us a big list, and you see here are several, but not all of the students on that list. Previously, the floor to our teachers would pick the children. This year, we must pay for the counselor.
You guys did a fantastic job. I have a question for the students. So I know you all talked about the benefits that, you know, you have gained from doing this. Talk to me about how, if this has helped you improve with your public speaking or speaking in your class, or kind of stepping outside of your comfort zone, anything like that. Has this helped you with that?
First time you go on there, and it's overall a lot of fun, though, once you get used to it, and like the birthdays and everything, you just learn to have fun with it, and like eventually you just stop caring like what like people are thinking about you. Like that nervousness just like goes away, and you're just like, hey, this is actually kind of fun.
That's awesome. Questions?
I've done drama for two years, so I did some public speaker of my own by acting. I'm in drama club this year as well.
Oh, awesome.
So a while back before I started doing the announcements, I heard that there was a radio club at the high school, and I'm like, no way, there's no way I'm going to get myself to do that. And after doing the announcements, I've gained the confidence, and I'm just like, well, this is something I do now, so now I'm doing the radio at the high school. And I've gotten the confidence to start doing the radio there.
Do you feel able to be more in the classroom to the shape, you know?
Yeah.
Sometimes as a teacher, some students are reserved and they are comfortable sharing.
Yeah, like if I have like something I present in front of the class, I have the confidence to be able to do that.
I think that's awesome.
Sorry. Where do you get the, where do you find the time every day to prepare? This is not something you're just doing off the top of your head in three minutes. When do you prepare for this, and how long does it take you?
We usually prepare every day before the announcements start. So like we read off a script, and then when the bell, the second bell rings, that's when we start the announcements, and then we were like, okay, we're ready if we can do this.
Even with all the video and audio and everything else?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent job. Can you get here before Mr. Urso?
No. We get here normal time.
We typically get here on time to school, and then we just go to our homeroom, and we tell the teacher, okay, we have to go to the newsroom today. And then we just immediately go to the newsroom, and then we just run through the whole thing once. And once the second bell rings, we go on the air and we run through the whole thing.
I just walk through my homeroom, it's like, hello, I'm here, I'm going to morning announcements, bye.
During the announcements, we normally have to get there before like 7:30. Most of us, like the buses unload at 7:20. And we have like a like specific like schedule for like who is going on when, so it's not just whoever shows up there first is like, oh, hey, you're going on announcements today. Or, hey, you're doing tech today. Like you have like this normally like a schedule you go off of, but if you're here and it's not your day, but somebody is like absent, you will fill in for them and do like their tech or stuff like that. And we have this checklist we have to go off of to like turn things on every morning. So it's normally the first person that gets into the room. And there's stuff like you gotta turn on the microphones and the different boards, else you're not gonna have like sound and music.
Just a question for you. Being that you're impacting the whole school, and your message is going off to the whole school, do other students say anything to you like, well, that's the person that gave the announcements, or that's the voice?
I mean, yeah, I've got recognized in the hallway before, like a lot of kids are like, oh, my God, that's the person that does the morning announcements. And I have a lot of people laughing where the room is.
Same here. I've gotten some, not much, but some recognition in the hall. Like my first day I went on there, I walked out, and my friends were like, oh, good job on the announcements today.
I'm gonna make it back here. I don't think many people know what a projector room is. It's at a closet, it's, there's a door in a classroom that goes in that.
It's basically a closet in a classroom. Like if you go up there, you actually have to go through a classroom to get in there.
It gets like really hot in there sometimes when like people walk in, and there's like a lot of people in there. It just gets really hot because you have so many bodies in there. It just gets a lot hot.
We've gotten, the room has gotten a reputation for being a clown car because it can hold so many people, but if you actually go in there, the room is absolutely tiny. Like it looks big on camera, but it's tiny.
Just to get to the room, let's just point this out. You have to walk through like about three different classrooms, and it's like a maze. Just like you walk through a classroom door, then you go and you walk through another classroom door, and then there's like secret hidden door that you open. You're like, whoa, all this technology, just like right there. It's like, it's a really weird place.
You make a secret studio. One try, the other door to the classroom, just to get in the picture.
Thank you so much, and the production that you have with the backdrop, you never would know that it was taking the closet upstairs. So thank you for the great work. Thank you, Mr. Cormack, and thank you all the students.
Okay, so next on our agenda is committee reports. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Sorry, I'll try to speak right into it. Committee reports. Students representatives, anything from you?
Last weekend at the Berlin Fair, the Up Bee and Interact clubs both brought ships around the fair.
A significant trend that's been going on at the high school is an increased number of college visits, and that's good for our students as they're able to introduce them to colleges they're interested in and to match name to face and applications, which will help them in the process.
Today, there was a local author visit. Author Mary Anne Tyrone Smith visited and spoke to the sophomores.
Another thing I want to note on is our very own banding chorus is going to be performing at the Wolfpack's Home opener in Hartford. Tickets are $15, and 25% of all those sales go directly to our brothers.
When is that?
My father's coming up from Florida to see the banding chorus.
Excellent.
Or the Hypey G.
On September 21st, the fires combined to perform via live stream for the United Nations Peace Day, and the project is called "The Voice for Peace."
And to end it off, I just wanted to let you guys know that our alumni have been active this past week with the class of 1968 going, doing a tour of the building for their 50th reunion, and it's good to see how much the building's changed for them.
The next committee is student achievement, which just met before. So we're going to have Aaron report later. I think that there's nothing where we really need to say right now. Correspondence to the board, that would be it.
No correspondence.
Okay, so that moves us to audience of citizens. Is there anyone who would like to speak or, no one? We can't hear you. Sorry. I will try to speak louder. Is that better? Yeah. Thank you. I feel like I have to put my face right on it. So moving forward, then the next on our agenda is the consent agenda. And the minutes were in the packet. I'll look for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Aye. Motion. Eight. Okay, no, not the one. Okay, moving forward, next is new business. We have the summer program update. Thank you.
This evening, we have a summer program update. I know the board has asked many questions about the summer program. Tonight, Linda Holian, Director of PPS, with both supervisors, Michelle Zoichner and Cindy Martin, will present to you information regarding our summer school program.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. So we're going to talk, we're going to summarize our summer school program from this past summer. So it's really looking at our students from the 2017, 2018 school year. And each year, we begin to make these decisions around March. At every PPT, we have to discuss which students will be eligible for summer school. And this is the criteria that our discussions are around. So there's a number of different criteria there. Some are regression, and some are non-regression factors, which we all must consider when we talk about our students' progress. So we look at the nature or the severity of our students' disability. We look, is a student likely to lose critical skills or fail to recover these skills within a reasonable time as compared to typical students? So we really look at our students' data throughout the entire year. When they come back after a long weekend, when they come back after the holiday break, when they come back after April break. Does it take them a significant amount of time to get caught back up because they weren't in school for those periods? The student's progress in the areas of learning is crucial to attaining self-sufficiency and independence. So these are some of our students that we work on a lot of life skills with, not just the math reading and writing. with, not just the math, reading, and writing. We look at students' stereotypic, ritualistic, aggressive, or self-injurious behaviors that sometime prevent them from learning. And we take all of this information at the PPTs and we discuss with the families, as well as the staff that work with our students, to determine if they need to participate in our extended school services. This is the page on the IEP where we have to make that determination. It's page 11 in the IEP, and there's three different boxes that we have, have a choice to check off. So students do not require summer school. Students require summer school, but they just need to receive services on page 11 in math, reading. Or, the last one, they need extended school year to implement the entire IEP. And those are typically my students that are in district placements. So the students that are outplaced and going to school at these outplacements, they get the exact same program all year, even through their summer school. Whereas our extended year school program is a modified, um, program, really focusing on math, reading, and writing, and then some of the related services, such as occupational therapy, speech and language therapy. So as we shared with you in the spring, this is what our extended year program looks like in our school district. So we have our preschool students that participate in the BLAST program. There are students with the most significant needs. So they come to school Monday through Friday, and they have four hours a day. And they go for five weeks during the summer. Then our BLAST elementary students, who again have our, the most significant needs, they're going to school Monday through Friday for five weeks for four hours a day. Our pre, our other preschool students are just coming four weeks. It's, it's usually the month of July, three days a week for three hours a day. Our elementary students, again, K to 5, is the four weeks, three days a week, three hours. Our middle school, high school, and transition, the same thing. They're going four weeks, three days a week, three hours. And I know that, that was a question that was brought up by some of you in the spring about the amount of time that our students receive on these services. Students may also receive, so they, they were really focusing, again, on the math, the reading, and the writing support that's on their page 11, but then some students also have related services. So they're being seen by the speech and language pathologists, the occupational therapist, the physical therapist, counseling, specialized reading, our BCBA provides support, our RBTs, and then our paraprofessionals as well. So this is just a summary about who was recommended for our extended school year services and who attended. If you look at the bottom, we recommended 125 students. Currently, right now, we have 425 students. So out of our, last year, I don't think we were at 425, we were probably like at 389, 390. So out of our 390 students last year, we have 125 students that really require those extended school, um, year services. 112 of them participated. If you look, it's our high school students that we have the most difficulty encouraging to come to extended, extended school year services, but it's still our, our recommendation. So we still make that recommendation, whether the, the family says that they're going to participate or not. So who are the staff? We broke this out for you. So I think when we first came to you, we thought that we were going to need 13, um, special ed teachers. But then, you know, Michelle, Cindy, and Joanne, and Sue, work on this. It's, it, when does it start? In April, May? Really looking at the list of students that are coming in, trying to hire the staff, the paraprofessionals, the teachers, um, how we could best organize the students. So instead of needing 13 special ed teachers, um, we ended up needing 11. We had one occupational therapist who worked with 20 of our students this summer. We had one physical therapist who worked with 18. We had three speech and language pathologists who worked with 39. Our high school SLP actually came down and worked with the preschool kids, and he had a wonderful time working with the little ones. We had one special ed teacher who continued to work with the students that had specialized reading, so she pulled them out in groups of two, three, or four. We had a school psychologist that worked with a handful of students. Um, the movement teacher was actually a general ed teacher. Um, and this was just, just a nice, we put this in probably five or six years ago. It just breaks up the day for the kids, so they actually get a movement. They don't get recess, but they get some structured activities with one of our teachers. We do have two nurses because we were at Willard and we were at McGee. And we had kids with significant needs, so we actually needed two separate nurses. Sometimes we can, we can hire one nurse and that nurse can go between, but right now, with the needs of our students, we really needed a nurse in each building. Um, we had, had a BCBA and RBTs, um, as well. Again, so just to summarize, the overall purpose of extended school year is to maintain skills for our medius learners in the areas identified on their IEP. So it's the math, the reading, the writing, and the life skills. Um, a tip, a typical IEP for the school year, um, most students, not every student, um, but we tried to look at the majority of our students, they get anywhere from 2.5 to five hours a week of math and reading, and about .5 and 2 and 1/2 hours a week of writing. So that's what they get throughout the typical year. RESY program approximately provides three hours a week of math and reading and an hour and a half hours of, of writing. So we're not that far off. But again, it's, I know people brought up in the spring, should we be giving our students more? And again, it's something that we can talk about. If that's, if that's an area we do want to explore, we'll probably want to talk about it before budget season because it would increase how much our summer school, um, cost for the year. And again, I think it's important to know that the students that participate in the extended school year service were not working on their entire IEP. So we really identify, they may have, say, five or six reading goals. We're, we may be only identifying three of the most critical reading goals for the summer. So that's our overall summary. I don't know if anyone has any questions? Go ahead, Anne.
Good evening. Uh, first of all, is there, um, transportation provided for students to and from? Are there any meals provided while they're in school?
No meals.
Okay. Um, and I was at the meeting and I don't really recall the, the response, but I know that in looking at the preschool in the elementary, five days a week, uh, five weeks, five days a week, that seems like a robust amount of time.
Yep.
And then when you look at, you know, elementary, middle, and high school, four weeks, three days a week, three hours a day.
Yep.
Is it meeting the needs of the students during that point in time during the summer? I mean, are they able to maintain, um, where they should be, uh, going from, uh, the end of the school year through the summer to the following school year? Or do you feel that there's more time needed? Because it just seems like a, and I don't know. I'm just asking. It seems like a very short amount of time to be in school.
And I think that's, I mean, and I don't know if you, Michelle and Cindy could speak more to that. I did reach out to a number of different districts, and I shared that in an update.
Right.
Half, about half of the people offer the program the way we do. Some, some of the other do four, four days a week, um, three hours or four hours a day.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if you want to speak to, how our kids come back.
I got good reports this year on how students returned, um, that they, very few have lost any ground because you do still have a lot of August off. Um, but, you know, I think as we remember that the purpose is to maintain their skills, we're not moving them ahead. So then, I, I got some really good reports from teachers that where students came back and they were happy with, with it. You know, you do, not all of them, some will lose.
Right.
Just because that's just how they are as learners and you try to hold on to them. But, um, it seemed to, I got good reports this year, so.
It's also, it's also nice to see that the amount recommended versus attended is very, attendance is very high. And, and of the 112, do you know, are they there for the duration or are they there for the majority of the days that are offered?
They're there for the majority of the days. I think when we looked, I think there were like five or six students at, at the elementary, preschool and elementary level who already had like a family vacation and took it off. But, um, our families know basically that the month of July is when we do summer school or extended school year. So they're actually now planning vacations either before or after. So that's, so they're, they're buying into that and understanding the importance of our program.
Thank you.
I have a question. In terms of the budget that we plan for, how do we do in terms of budget we're looking at next year? Are we, are we gonna be adding to the budget, increasing it, or is it just...
You know, traditionally, the number of students that we recommend has been about the same. It will go up every year just because of the hourly rate. Our staff are paid on a per diem rate, so that rate goes up every year. And transportation goes up every year. We budget about $100,000 just for salaries, not for transportation. This year, um, our salary's about $96,300. Transportation was another 54, so, you know, you're looking at $150,000 to run summer school. So if we increase another day, with some more hours, that will go up.
How do I compare those? You know, maybe that's the budget originally, which you said we had budgeted the person teachers, but it only ended up being 11 because of the...
Rich, over the past few years, we've always budgeted $100,000, um, for summer school in salaries. I never, I, in the past, the business manager looked at the transportation budget, so in my budget, it was always $100,000. So that's always been there. So we were at, at 96,300 for the salaries.
Is that how much of the business is funded?
I don't know. I, I could find that out with my little, my group of people. Yeah.
Are there, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. People don't hear us, hang on, can you hear me? Um, were the, I assume there were pairs, but...
Yeah, I know, I, we forgot the pairs in our chart. I noticed that too.
So how many pairs approximately were part of the program?
There were a significant amount.
Say again?
There were a significant amount. Well, I'll get back, I noticed that in our chart. I said, we forgot the pairs.
I didn't have 30 down in one, in one area. I just, yeah.
Oh, that's what it was. The, the BCBA should say paraprofessional, so to carry that.
No, no, the BCBA works with 30 students.
Oh, service. Yeah, we'll have to get that number to you.
I was just curious. And then, if I could just ask a question for clarification purposes, on the, in the first page.
Yep.
Wherein it's bulleted, um, it says, "Other special circumstances identified by the IEP teams, such as the ability of the student to interact with other non-disabled students." What's, what is the meaning of that?
Those, that's our students, our, um, transition students.
Okay, so, but what does that statement actually mean? I'm just kind of wondering. So, as a criterion, what, what is that?
Well, they're having, they're having that time to go out and be in the workforce, so they're interacting with non-disabled.
Got it, okay. So, kind of, um, all right, I'm gonna ask a, a separate question, and that is, primarily the, um, areas that are worked on or targeted during the summer months are academic. Are there, what about the social skills and the, and the measurement of maintenance or...
In our BLAST program?
Yeah.
Um, the social skills, the life skills, the math, all those, those are targeted with those students.
Right.
And then the students that are in our other programs, the social skills will be addressed with the, um, school psychologists.
Okay. So are those data also looking positive? Just kind of piggybacking on Adam's earlier question.
Yep.
The maintenance of skills or the, um, uh, yeah, because maintenance of skills. So the data that are collected for those students at the end of the academic year, and then again at the beginning of the year, how, what is sort of the trend of those data?
I mean, we're, we're just getting back now, but I was actually in IDT at Willard today and asking about some of our youngsters that I know, social skills have been difficult. And one of the youngsters that I've known since preschool is in, going into fifth grade this year, he said he came back wonderful. Um, so, you know, it's, and, and every individual student, you know, overall, I think the majority of the kids are coming back okay, but then, but, you know, a lot of things can happen in the summer for some of those students too. So it's all what's happening in everyday life for them.
Right.
But most of them are, are coming back good.
Okay.
That's not a good thing to say.
Yeah.
When you do the academic year, is it based on testing in terms of, you know, that they're maintaining, that they're just kind of normal?
Well, that's what they're doing now with the Fanta's and Pennell and the NW, all of them just did the NWEA, so they're just going through a lot of that testing right now. Yeah.
For typical student, you, with the Fanta's and Pennell, you do accept this, that, um, that, um, both, that you're in 22 levels per level. That's, that doesn't make a thing. But in terms of, we just see what our student, to, that is, um, the 12 versus 4.
Well, that right now, start, we can come back with that information for you.
Start.
Yeah.
Question.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm probably going backwards. You, everyone might already know this, but what's the difference between BLAST Elementary and Elementary?
The BLAST Elementary are our most significant learners.
They require a little more time, that's why it's five weeks.
Yes, they're working on a lot of life skills as well as, it's more functional academics. They're not following your typical trend of, of learning how to read and write.
Thank you.
Many of those students will be in school with us, Adam, up until age 21.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Okay, you're welcome.
NEAS update is our next.
Tonight, we have Principal Eileen Eustace, and Eileen will introduce the two staff members here who are about NEAS to give you an update of our NEAS visit, which will take place next month.
So, good evening, everybody, and thank you for having us. So, when I was hired in May, I had a meeting, I don't, Brian, I don't know if you remember this, shortly thereafter, and I asked Superintendent Benigni, I said, "So, how long will it be before NEAS is here?" And he said, "Oh, they're coming this fall." And I was like, "Oh, great." Um, and he reassured me that we were in good shape. And he couldn't have been more right. I have, you know, been through the NEAS process and a few of the other schools that I've worked in, and I know what a rigorous process it is. And when I came in this summer, I had an opportunity to meet with the three steering committee chairs. Um, Adam Leonard, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, and we have Patricia Pyris, who's here with us, and Lori Peseawitz. Um, and I met with all of them individually, and they told me a little bit about the work in terms of the NEAS process. And I couldn't have been more impressed with the work that they have done. It is a really amazing, comprehensive process, and they have really knocked it out of the park. We still have work to do just leading up to the visit itself, and that's one of the things that they will go through so that you can understand the complexity of the actual visit when the visiting team comes and how much work goes into it. But I didn't really feel, I, I didn't feel right being the one to present the information tonight because it's not my work. It's their work, and it's the work that they led with our faculty and staff, as well as, um, they will be working with students pretty shortly in terms of this process and parents as well. Um, and it's a tremendous amount of work. So I'm gonna turn it over to them and have them, uh, go through the process and answer any questions that you might have about the NEAS accreditation. Thank you. Um, so what is NEAS? Uh, NEAS is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And it's actually a voluntary process. And why we would choose to go through the rigorous program that we're gonna outline for you tonight is because of what NEAS stands for. And the committee...
And the committee members of NEASK get together and they create the standards of what would be a high-quality, top-notch education. And so we choose, along with the other members of NEASK, to wanna show and prove that we are offering that top-notch education to students in Berlin. And as you can see up there, the whole process is, you're gonna hear about NEASK now, and you've heard about it leading up to now for the past year or so, but really, it's an every-ten-year cycle. And it's part of what we do throughout all these ten years. And it starts with the program we're gonna outline for you and show you what we've been doing with the research, and showing what it is that we do. And then the next step is to be creating goals for improvement, and then the next step after that is to be taking some action steps, so that we are continuing to improve. And we do that as a, as a faculty. We do that with your support. We do that with the support of administration, so that as a school, we're always offering that top-notch education.
Why is the accreditation process important? First and foremost, the process ensures students, parents, and the public that we offer a high-quality learning experience at Berlin High School. We are held to the highest standards of globally-recognized educational excellence. Additionally, the self-reflection and assessment also ensures that all stakeholders within the Berlin High School community align our work with our core values and beliefs about learning. We benefit greatly from this opportunity as we explore our own strengths and needs as a whole faculty. Finally, some incredibly important work has already come out of our self-study prior to our visitation, which we'll elaborate on in just a few minutes.
So as you can see on the PowerPoint behind you, there are seven standards that we, as a faculty, and parents, and students have taken a look at, and that NEASK has set aside for us as what we should be doing, again, to create that high-quality education. So the first standard is the core values, beliefs, and learning expectations, and that is, what are our core beliefs and values and learning expectations? Do we have them? And are the decisions that we make as a faculty and as a district, are they driven by those core values and beliefs, and making sure that what we do is in support of those? The next thing that they'll take a look at would be curriculum. And again, do we have a curriculum? Does that curriculum address 21st learning expectation, 21st-century learning expectations, so that our students are prepared to go out into the world? The next thing they'll look at is instruction. And again, are we, as a faculty, providing the best instruction for our students in the most effective manner for them and for their learning? The next thing they'll look at is assessment of and for student learning. Again, is our assessment, going back to assessing how our students are meeting our core values, beliefs, and learning expectations? Is our assessments actually measuring what we're trying to teach them? The next thing that they'll look at is school culture and leadership, and what is the culture of our school? Is it a culture where students feel safe to take risks, educationally, intellectually? And is the leadership there to support those students and the faculty to take those educational risks? The next thing they'll look at would be school resources for learning, and those would be the support services that are necessary for students. So things like making sure that we have adequate nursing staff, school counseling staff, resources for at-risk students, so that all of those students are being supported. And then finally, community resources for learning. So they'll take a look at, too, are we, do we have community resources that are helping us to support the education of our students and to support other important 21st-century skills?
As Eileen mentioned earlier, the steering committee chairs include Adam Leonard, Patty Pyris, and myself. Though I do have to say that the lion's share of the credit goes entirely to Adam and Patty. While I was always a member of the steering committee, when Patty was on leave, I was asked to step in as a chair. And I have to say, the work that had already been put in place was tremendous and helped make my job much, much easier. The entire committee has worked tirelessly in various aspects of the self-study process, from the initial planning, writing the reports, all the way through to the arrangement of the logistics of our upcoming visit. This work allowed numerous faculty members to serve in a leadership role, as each standard and committee chair was responsible for communicating and understanding of the standard and each indicator below it, in order to craft a thoughtful and cohesive report representative of each committee's findings. We're incredibly thankful for the hard work of all of our colleagues in this process. It truly took our entire faculty to do this.
So generally, the self-study process, as I said, it's a ten-year process. We started off two years ago, taking a look at what are the standards and what are the indicators for each of those standards that we would need to be taking a look at. So it's been a while that we've really been spending our time during professional development and after-school to gather data and analyze that data, working together, hashing out how people interpret things. So it's been a while that we've taken a look at that. It's definitely, as it says, rigorous and comprehensive self-reflection. As Mrs. Pasewitz outlined, every faculty member was part of a committee. In the committee, the first things that we did was send out an Endicott survey, which that survey goes to the staff and to parents and to students, to analyze, how are we meeting those standards that were outlined before? And so then the staff comes together and analyzes that data, and we take a look at what are our strengths, what are our areas that we need to improve, and then we go out and we find evidence to support those. So the Endicott survey is one source of evidence, but then we also go out as part of our committees, and we do interviews, and we gather data, and we file research documents. So everything that we, we state as a finding is supported by evidence. We then would get together in meetings, during faculty meetings, during professional development time, and hash out all the data, pull it together, and work it together. You've got like ten, twelve people working together, try to come to consensus, and creating a document that's gonna be then reviewed by the entire staff. So at faculty meetings, we would review the document and then vote as to whether, as a faculty, we agreed with the findings of each committee. The next things that are happening is the stage that we're in now, and that's preparation for the visiting team. So they will have committee members from NEASK that are from all across New England. They're gonna come, and we're gonna host them over the next few, few days in October, and they're gonna basically live and breathe our school with us for a few days, and find out what it is that we do, what is our strengths, and they'll reward us for those strengths, and then those areas that we need, are in need of improvement, they'll give us some suggestions on what we need to do to improve. And at the very end, the report gets submitted, and we start that ten-year process all over again.
The next few slides will take you through a day-by-day agenda, if you will, of the visit. Beginning Sunday, October 28th, through Wednesday, October 31st, as Mrs. Pyris mentioned, we will be hosting a team of sixteen educators from the New England region. The team includes a superintendent, building administrators, and teachers representing every subject area. The visit will include various presentations, a welcoming reception, an examination of student work, and interviews with students, teachers, board members, and parents. All of this, except for the events on Sunday, are going to be occurring during regular school hours while school is in session. That does include Halloween, and we have indeed assured that there will not be a full moon on that day. Nonetheless, we are looking forward to a very exciting and very busy visit.
Yep. So this is what Sunday looks like. The team comes in to Berlin High School around one o'clock, and we welcome them with a panel presentation, and the panel presentation is a basic summary of our findings, of our strengths, our areas in need of improvement. We try to show off all of the wonderful things that we have to offer at Berlin High School, so that they get a feeling of what we're most proud of and what we represent. After the panel presentation, there will be interviews, and as you can see up there, there are Board of Education interviews. So you will get a formal invitation, inviting you to attend our panel presentation, and then to participate in the interviews. As I said, the panel presentation is from one to two, and then the interviews are from 2:15 to three o'clock. At the same time, members of the visiting committee will also be interviewing parents, to see what parents feel about how we're meeting those standards. After that, there'll also be interviews with teachers, where teachers get to show off some of their best practices, and talk about the, our core values, talk about our rubrics and evaluation, and how we're doing our best to meet the needs of our students. After that, there'll be a welcome reception, where again, we'll have some of our students come and perform, show off some of our talents, and it's also a time for the committee members to mingle with staff members, to just sort of get a feeling for who we are, what our culture is like, and ask any questions they may have of us. And then they leave us, and thankfully, we get to go back home, get ready for Monday, and they, the committee, the visiting team goes back to their hotel, and they work for hours at that point. And they'll take a look at, we've collected buckets of student work, and they'll start going through the student work. They'll talk about first impressions, and they'll actually start writing their report that evening, based on what they've seen about us so far.
On Monday, we will begin the day with some student-led tours of the building, as well as the tour of the boiler room, the furnace, all the nuts and bolts of Berlin High School, as our visitors get to know their home away from home for a few days. Visitors will be shadowing students. They will sit down on various classes throughout the course of the day to really get a sense for what the school looks like in action, and what learning and assessing student learning looks like in each classroom. Various small group meetings and meetings with standards committees will also take place throughout the school day. From there, again, our team will leave us, go back to their hotel, and continue to work on their report that night.
Tuesday is a continue of much of the same. As you can see, there'll be more small group meetings, as all the committee members want to really get to understand what we do. There will be continuing of student shadowing, so they'll get to sit and eat in the cafeteria, and see how food is, and see what it's like in there. They'll also visit the classrooms to see what a typical day is at Berlin High School, what kind of technology we're using, what kind of teaching resources we're using. And then again, they'll return back and do their reporting.
On our team's final day, Wednesday, October 31st, additional classroom visits will take place before the team concludes its report-writing, and then votes on the accreditation status of Berlin High School. Closing remarks will then be made by the visiting chair to the entire school community at this time. And we truly look forward to celebrating a very positive report and the continued accreditation of Berlin High School with all of you.
And as a result of this process that we've begun already, we've got some new additions to Berlin High School that we're very proud of and that are helping to drive our education. And one of those was the development of our core values and beliefs about Berlin High School learning. We had always had core values and beliefs. Our mission statement, it was once called, it's now called the Core Values and Beliefs, but this gave us the opportunity to relook at that, 'cause it had been a while since we all had sat down as a committee and really take a look at, what do we want our Berlin High School students to be able to accomplish once they graduate Berlin High School? And we've got a little video that we're gonna show you in a minute. Another thing that we did was, as I said earlier, we've got these core values and beliefs, but how do we know that our students are actually learning those expectations that we have for them? And while we, student teachers were using rubrics to assess student learning, and we're using some school-wide rubrics, we weren't universally using those school-wide rubrics to assess things like problem-solving. And so what we did as a, as a faculty was, took the time to sit down and decide, what are those criteria, again, in all these different areas that we want students to be able to master, and how will we know that they've mastered those, those important skills? And that was a cumbersome process, because again, you've got people from different disciplines, math and English, who would have to come together and say, "What does problem-solving look like in my discipline versus another discipline?" And so what we did with that then was, we also went through calibration, where different department members and, inter-departmentally and within departments calibrated how they would use those rubrics. And Jet Nero, who is just brilliant, came up with a way to customize the rubrics, so that if we're looking at different strands of, for example, problem-solving, or reading skills, or writing skills, we could take those pieces and put it together to a customizable rubric, which is fabulous. And all of that, as we said, was brought together as a whole faculty. So we're all standing behind these, these new developments at our school.
All members
Of the
Berlin
High School
Community
Will engage collaboratively
To ensure rigorous
And relevant
Learning
To cultivate
Transferable skills
Toward success
In a global society
Explore
Diverse
Perspectives
And evaluate
Sources
To express
Thoughtful
Judgments
Think flexibly
Take
Responsible risks
And listen
With understanding
And empathy
Seek
To solve
Problems
Creatively
By developing
Solutions
Findings
Prototypes
Performances
Or media
Become
Self-driven
Self-reflective
Independent
Learners
Exhibit
Personal
Community
And environmental
Health
Model
Kind
And ethical
Conduct
Contribute
To a safe and supportive society
That respects
Our differences.
So, that video is a little teaser. There's actually an expanded four-minute version of this video that we will unveil at the panel presentation, and it was also in conjunction with students as well that helped produce the videos, as well as the customizable rubric work, which I believe they presented to all of you in May. Really impressive work. So, this is really, honestly, it's a very small snapshot of the amount of work that our faculty and staff has put in, and it is a, it really takes a tremendous amount of like, really solid leadership from our faculty members to pull all of this together. I know in your, I'm sure you really all read 138 pages of that report that was in the envelope, but there's a lot of executive, there's executive summaries, as well as listings of critical strengths and needs within that report, but it's really a comprehensive report, and they did such a good job. I, you know, I have some experience with NEASK from some of the other places that I've been in, and to be quite honest with you, the process can be a little bit of a hot mess sometimes if you don't have really good leadership in place leading this process. And again, I can't express how impressed I was with their work, and really how seriously they, they took all of it, and how invested they have been in this process, and really have done just such a tremendous job. So we'll take any questions, if anybody has questions.
I'll ask, sure. If you're looking at ten years ago, and obviously, things have changed a little bit in the formation or the actual physical structure of the high school, but what was the biggest thing that you're looking at, just out of curiosity, over the last ten years? Is it more curriculum-based? You know, what's, what's the main focus between last time and this time, going through the process?
I just got here. And I, interestingly enough, they don't want us to look back as to where we were. What they want us to do is look at where we are now, and that was a struggle with some of our, our chairs as well, 'cause they're like, "Well, let's, let's look and see what they said about us last time, ten years ago, and let's see where our deficits were ten years ago." They said, "No, no, 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 you're not supposed to do that." These are the standards that they have, based on those seven standards. These are the criteria you're supposed to be meeting, so look at where you are now. So, I know, just offhand, from ten years ago, that one of the reasons that we did the Renovate-as-New project was because there were recommendations through the NEASK evaluation, saying that we, our building wasn't able to support some of the 21st-century learnings, such as like in the science labs, and, so I know that was part of the push for a change. So I know that was part of the push for a change like that in the building itself. I also know that 10 years ago, there was concern about the documentation of our curriculum, which is now part of the reason that we have the Atlas system so that everyone's documenting the curriculum and it's available for everyone to see and follow. So I know those were two big things off the top of my head.
And if there are findings following the, their visit, they provide you with time to rectify, or is there a roadmap that they have to, you have to implement your own?
Yep. So one of the things that actually Mrs. Eustace came up with after reading our 138-page report is a two- and five-year plan. So based on what we consider, what we consider to be our areas of need, we've already put together, she's already put together, a two- and five-year plan of how we're going to rectify those things. And then NEAS will also give us suggestions on other areas that we should work on. But like, it's like that 10-year process, so we will get, I know, I'm confident, we will get our accreditation when they come and visit. They're going to be cheering us on because we're so fabulous. But then they'll tell us some things to work on and it'll take us, you know, two years. We'll do a check-in after two years, we do a check-in after five years, and then we keep working on the process.
When you see that check-in between the two and the five years, is NEAS involved in that? I mean, are they're the ones checking in?
Yes, we're writing, we
Okay.
Are writing reports.
Oh, no, no, no.
I see a volunteer, yes, okay.
Will be writing reports and submitting them to NEAS so that we're evaluating how far we've come and then we submit it to them.
Great, thank you.
They will provide us with, we're hoping, not too many recommendations, but it's pretty common that there's a fairly lengthy list, and then what we will do as a school community is go through, and we can either decide to accept or reject some of the recommendations depending on the appropriateness for our school. And we do put a, we do have to respond with a two-year report, sometimes there's a special progress report if there's something in particular that they want us to respond to, and then we do have to respond in a five-year report. So it really forces your hand to put an action plan together to act on the recommendations in terms of that. And then they will go through and accept your report or ask for further work to be done on some of those recommendations.
So you talked about collecting a lot of student work samples and also having parents and faculty and Board of Ed member interviews and so forth. Are those random samples or are they selected individuals and/or work samples? Like are the work samples exemplars or is it a random sampling?
No, no, and that's another thing too. What we want to show and what they want to see is who is Berlin High School? So with any work sample that's submitted, we should be seeing like what is an exemplar and what is one that's still in need of work. They also want to see, you know, the vast classes and levels. So they'll see work samples from grades nine through 12, they'll see work samples from students in learning center classes and college preparatory classes, AP classes, honors classes, they'll see it all because we're proud of all that work that we do. So I don't think we need to stack our deck. The same thing too with parents as well, is the parents that are going to be invited, our parents of students nine through 12, and we're selecting those parents because we want to make sure that they represent the spectrum. So parents of students that are athletes, parents of students who are involved in music, parents of students who are involved in tech ed programming outside of school. So it's a diverse perspective. There is some, we actually are meeting, we just received word last, two weeks ago who our chair is, and he is meeting with us this week, and he certainly may direct us in certain ways in terms of, but typically they try to visit almost every class, every single teacher, I believe, gets visited in the building over the course of those days. And we kind of joke about this right now, like you're running this whole visit and yet you still have to have school all three days. You know, like the regular part of school is still going on, so it's sometime, you know, it's a little bit of like chaos on top of our like orderly chaos, as I like to call it.
And did I understand the presentation correct in that the report is issued to you at the end of the visit?
So what the chair will do, the visiting committee, what they have to do is basically decide if we will receive an acceptable rating in each one of those seven standards. So they, as a committee, they vet with all the information that they've been given, the report, the data, their interviews and all of that, they, and they're broken down into standards groups themselves, and they, and then, but then they talk as an entire visiting team and make a decision on each one of those standards. And then basically what the chair will do at that, for the closing remarks is really just give us a few statements at that point, but we will get a very long, comprehensive report probably in the springtime, so.
But you'll have the gist of
We will have the gist of really what they, what our greatest strengths are, and they, my hope too is that they'll leave us with what are, you know, what are some of the recommendations that they are rising to the top for us at this point.
What are the advisory ratings? I see them in some of these areas. What do you have to use or what do they use? I see acceptable and limited and how many are there?
So each one of those standards has a certain number of indicators, I believe that, so core values and beliefs, there's four indicators, and then some of the latter ones, I believe with resources, there's like 14. So you have to go through, they have to go through each one of those indicators and there is a much, there's a lot of information from NEAS in terms of what would be acceptable, and they actually use a rubric in terms of their own scoring as well.
Where do they, yeah, so where do they fall? Is acceptable the top or is there?
Is it exemplary, I'm going to, exemplary, acceptable, limited, and does not meet expectation?
Just a, NEAS, do we, who pays for them to stay and do everything? Do we pay for them? Okay. And
For couch.
My house is open, it's under renovation, it's open. And then, so you pay for them to stay, is there like an annual, do we pay any like annual fees or anything to belong?
We budgeted for the visit. We knew that the visit was coming, and the budgeted amount was somewhere around $20,000, I believe.
And do we have any people from Berlin that have served on committees going to other communities?
We have a number of people at the high school that have gone out and served on visiting teams, and just to let you know, the people that come in, it is voluntary on their part as well. Not only are they out of their buildings and their districts, but they put, not only are they in school all day and here on Sunday, but they are working like many, many, many hours into the night. Like really, having done it myself, like you're up till like midnight, one o'clock every night, like just grinding away at a report, and then your report gets submitted to the chair and the chair basically then takes it afterwards and for a few months will work on it so that it's, it's really comprehensive because you have so many different people writing different pieces of the report.
I'm just happy if things go well because last time I heard NEAS, it was not good news 10 years ago, so we're looking forward to some good stuff, mostly about facility, not curriculum, facility, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the child nutrition program.
So each year, we need to certify that we want to participate in the child nutrition And what this allows us to do is to be part of, recognized by the United States Department of Agriculture and provide us to purchase food through the US Department. So for purchasing bulk chicken or various produce, be able to buy it at a much cheaper rate. So I don't know if there's any questions about it, we've been part of it before. We need to take action that we're part of it, so I know that a quarter of our has to do it.
So hard to execute the agreement today. Right? We got to
It sets here. To set the people's time for. So
I'm with you. So I move that the Berlin Board of Education enters a permanent single agreement. We, on the United States Department of Education, participated in child nutrition programs designated by an agency, a vacant superintendent school, the authorized person assigned claims for reimbursement, designated Jeffrey Kupka as the authorized person assigned claims for reimbursement in absence or incapacity of superintendent school.
Second.
I think so. So I write second by Tim. And next is a, a related updated
Just very quickly, I don't have much more to add relative to the last two weeks ago, basically the same report except you remember some of our conversation was regarding the high school condition of the project, where the education closed out and so forth. Given that I thought about it, it's a pretty good direction of looking forward, one week has passed and the public building committee, I have sent out this letter today, I'm sorry it wasn't in the package, but it went out today, so. It sums up what, at least I think, we should be asking the public building committee regarding the Berlin High School project, and this is all in regard for not just testing them on what they're doing. And what they plan to do is how it affects the operation of the school, how it affects what we need to make happen to the school before your master's set. Project So really, about the national, you read it all, whatever. Yeah. You got to go on. I'm sorry. Take that. Yeah, I, I really was going to read it to you. I was just going to let you know that the letter
It's for the camera because I can't hear you.
Oh, this one doesn't work yet? Okay, watch this, Ryan, this is for you. I was down in the bed. Okay, so, again, with last, two weeks ago, you asked me, there's some conversation back and forth relative to what condition Berlin High School is in, do we have any new information relative to potential closeout, potential improvements on some of the items that have been talked about over the last few months? What this letter does, I believe, is ask the public building committee some very pertinent questions on the current condition and what they plan to do going forward, and also some things that I think we're very interested in. Again, I wanted to just let you know that this was sent out today. I've asked that they respond to this letter after their next meeting, which they have a meeting, I think, in the first week of October. So hopefully we'll have a lot more information coming forward. I think it'll soothe everybody a little bit on the kind of information we get hopefully, but I think this will be a manner in which at least you can start to evaluate what you've got to discuss and what you've got to be comfortable with before you go forward to accept the project. So that's all I wanted to get on the record today. If you do happen to read it either now or at some other point and question what it's about, I'll do my best to answer the questions, but again, I'm sorry it wasn't in your package today, but it was just sent out today. As a matter of fact, it was mailed today, so the chairman, it is written to the chairman, the chairman most probably has not received it yet, so.
I know in the past we have asked the public building commission, the board has asked them for a status report. I think that Jeff's letter here requests just that, some areas that we've spoken about over the last few months. I know last meeting, we had a discussion of what's eligible for grants and what's not eligible for grants because the construction project is not finished, speaks to the need to determine what needs to be completed and what is completed and then the satisfaction of what's
Jeff, you may have said this, but I did not hear it. Did you ask that they respond by a certain date?
After meeting. I asked them to prove yourself up after meeting.
Okay.
I want to take care of me. Again, this is just a written request to the chairman. I'm assuming the chairman will bring this to the committee, discuss these items and provide a response whenever it's reasonable for them. I can't guarantee when it will come, but I will try to track it the best I can with the commission.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. All right. The last item on our new business agenda is for Dr. Pepper to speaker does that the district improvement plan. Continue.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I was just trying to make sure you folks recognize that that
Thank you.
Improvements we've tried to get done for a while, happened, so
Did you want to get on the mic? Did you want to make?
Cheers.
Okay, so I was asked tonight to present the draft district continuous improvement plan. For members of the audience, what's being projected is just the cover page of the plan. The board members have the whole document, but it's hard for me to talk and scroll at the same time. So I want to show you just sort of the layout of how it's set up and the work that we've been doing. So this work on the district continuous improvement plan began in August during our administrative retreat days with the 19 administrators and two of our teacher leaders together for two days at a retreat with the Center for School Change and then back in district at our own administrative professional learning time. We spent time across the summer reading two professional books. We read What School Could Be by Ted Dintersmith and Deep Learning by Fulan Quinn and McKirkin, which served as part of our background knowledge and building some shared understanding, some shared sense of direction for our district moving forward. At our board meeting two weeks ago, we shared with you sort of the themes of purpose, passion, and pride and explained where those came from. But generally, for those who are just hearing this tonight, we developed as an administrative team, three broad goals, three areas of focus, which primarily revolve around building commitment to and shared understanding of the Berlin learner outcomes, continuing to build a strong culture of learning both for educators and for students, and enhancing community partnerships to support student learning. Related to those areas, we decided to come up with some phraseology to capture the essence of the work in those areas and identify purpose as being the shared understanding related to the Berlin learner outcomes that the work that we do across our pre-K to 12 organization on developing shared outcomes for every Berlin student create a sense of purpose to our work and help service and organizing factor for us. We think that one of the important things that we do as a district is to capitalize on the passion of our educators and their love of learning and to capture the love of learning in our students and to make sure that we're working to support that across the entire pre-K to 12 continuum. And we certainly know that there's a strong sense of pride in the Berlin community for the school system. We want to continue to enhance that sense of pride through developing stronger community relationships and sharing some of the great things that are happening across the school district. So you'll see right below that, there's a bar that says learning environments, enhancing the culture of learning and environments, enhancing the culture of learning and the design of physical and virtual space. We use the organizing structure from Fulham's text, which takes district work around coherence and creating a sense of shared vision for our work in four main areas. And we use those four areas as a way to organize the district improvement plan. In each of the areas, we worked collaboratively to identify action steps and strategies to think about who the timeframe, what the timeframe was, who would be responsible, and what a results indicator would be. And the way that this essentially worked is that our 19 district administrators and two teacher learners worked together with me facilitating the work across our professional learning days. And based on the shared learning that we were doing, the reading that we've done, and their assessment of the current status of the district, they identified action steps and strategies. I took the draft action steps and strategies, which were on about 100 index cards, sorted the index cards, organized it, and came back to the committee with a draft of a district improvement plan. And the administrators had feedback on it. They had some things that they wanted to change, some things to add, some things where they wanted the language to read differently, to be clearer. And we worked through a collaborative process to identify the steps in the plan. So I'm just going to highlight some of the big picture ideas. Under learning environment, we really are thinking about enhancing the culture of learning and the design of physical and virtual space. We also in this category put things that relate to the resource of time and how we use time across the day. And also thinking about learning environment in terms of the social emotional culture of our classrooms, not just the physical environment. So it wasn't just like, are there posters up on the walls of the classroom? But are the classrooms welcoming warm environments for our students and do they support student learning? So developing a district-wide plan to support social emotional learning is one of the aspects of the plan. Looking at ways that we're providing training related to equity issues in education, thinking about the ways that we use time, including examining master schedules to look at ways that they support, creating additional opportunities for professional learning that are primarily voluntary opportunities for teachers before, after, during the school day, that might include things like book clubs, TED Talks, and peer-to-peer learning. You've already heard me talk, when we talked about the new teacher orientation, about the Teacher Leadership Academy and the great work that they've done. This is a group of teachers across the district who have come together to provide an additional level of support for new teachers and have created a plan of opportunities for them to meet and have both instructional support and support sort of navigating the system and ways for them to network and build relationships. We're also looking at ways that we are creating opportunities for students to pursue personal learning goals. And this is really related to developing that spirit of supporting student investigation of topics of their interest, thinking that the idea of examining their own interests is one of the ways to continue to facilitate a sense of love of learning. In the area of learning partnerships, some of the things I want to highlight are thinking about ways that we partner with community organizations, ways that we can bring in expertise of people in our community, of parents and other community members to support student learning. So that might be coming in to mentor, it might be coming in to do a talk on career opportunities, it might be helping us provide a mentorship or internship site in the community. One of the things you see there is scheduled community viewing of Most Likely to Succeed. That is the movie that Ted Dintersmith, who's the author of this text, created with Tony Wagner. And one of the things that's really important about the film is that it highlights the importance of beyond academic skills, the other kinds of skills that are captured in our Berlin learner outcomes for students to be successful as they move forward in life. So academics are and will always be important, but there are also other things that contribute to success. And Most Likely to Succeed is their treatment of looking at the ways that schools across the country are rallying around this idea. In leveraging digital, you'll see specifically some of the ways that we use technology to support student learning. One of the things that we're highlighting is constructing a continuum of desired student competencies and digital citizenship and digital literacy. And that notion of a continuum of competencies really means that we're looking across the school district to say, what kinds of things do we want kids to be learning in K2, in 3-5, in the middle school, in the high school? So they have that sense of continuous learning through the school system. They're not having the same lessons repeated to them at different grade levels inadvertently. But we really have a sense that their skills and their understanding is are deepening and growing over time. You'll also see in this category things like providing educator training on tools such as Twitter to facilitate professional learning networks and foster positive public relationships with our community. And yes, you can now follow Brian Benigni I on Twitter. He's got his Twitter account set up. I believe that that's going to be added for early announcement of snow days. Brian's just learning of this right now.
Great way to get some followers.
I know, so excited. Brian, you got a follower right in our student achievement meeting. And in the last category, pedagogical practices, building educator expertise, one of the things that is highlighted there is developing a professional learning plan related to our transition to next generation science center, science standards. We actually had a group of our district science leadership team at the Connecticut Science Center today to begin work on that plan. But it's really important as we think about the ways that we're providing professional learning to all of the teachers across the district who have responsibility for teaching science, which sounds easy if you're thinking about science teachers at the middle school and the high school, because that's a pretty finite number. But when you look at all of the K5 teachers that also teach science, it's a much bigger number for us to reach out to and to develop plans for. As you keep going through the plan, you'll see some other things that should sound familiar to you, continuing support of the workshop models, thinking about ways that we're supporting the habits of mind, looking at how we are using assessments across the district, and thinking about our intervention practices. So we think that this provides good guidance for us to move forward with the work this year. I think one of the things that is most important for you to understand is that when we talked about putting this plan together, we conceptualized the continuous improvement plan as communicating a vision to the entire community about what we stand for and what's important to us. So it's not so much a checklist, like will we do every single one of these steps and complete it all within this year? But does this represent the path that we want to be following moving forward? And are we able to use this to articulate to everyone who's part of our school community the kinds of things that we're working on? And the next level of work is that the building principals are taking the template for this plan and creating their own building-based school plans so that they have a school plan that is in alignment with the district plan, but that captures the particular things that are areas of focus at their schools within the parameters of this plan. So for example, if you look at an area such as the work related to math workshop, it might be what specific work is going to happen in their buildings with math studio this year, so that it's both continuing the work that has been started in the past and building some new directions for us as a district.
So those of us on the student achievement committee.
Pardon me?
Yeah, those of us on the student achievement committee had the opportunity to ask you a number of questions in advance of the meeting. But is there anyone else on the board who'd like to ask, Erin?
This is all you're going to work on this year? Nothing else?
This year and probably many years.
Just sitting around with my feet up.
I do just want to say, the love of student achievement committee, I love very much this as a mentor and a staff. And one thing I pointed out to everybody that I just want to quote, under their leadership, though, number five, revise and refine teacher guidelines through social media. I know that's something that we talked about with the board. It's a great area for teachers and like they go really beneficial to our school community as well. So I know it's a small part of this, but I think it's important, especially I know even the communications committee has been doing a lot of talking about how can we reach more people. But again, with social media, it is a great area. So I think providing that teacher guideline will really be a really helpful point.
Social media is a great tool for us, but if we don't provide guidelines for all of us to follow, it's also a place where people can get themselves into trouble inadvertently or that people will hold back and not participate in because they're not sure what they're able to do or not able to do. So it's important for us to communicate about it in a positive way in the ways that it's already being used to highlight great things that are happening in our schools and to build on from there.
Comments, questions? Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Is anyone on our agenda?
Erin.
Yeah.
Sheldon, Dad, I'll remember Paris.
Oh, okay. We have 32 for summer school.
Thank you. So I would refer final motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Vote by children and vote by Jamie, all in favor.
Aye.